Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're running a little late, but I would like to call and order this regular meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start off with an invocation by Mrs. Binder and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Miller. So if you would all stand, please.
Please, Lord, help guide us to make the best decisions for the citizens of our county and young and old. Amen.
Mr. Miller, any agendas, any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to now open a public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is anyone here for general public comment? Step right up, sir.
Hi, evening, Board. My name is Mike Muth. I live in the Shiloh District, and I wanted to talk tonight about the issue of dog hunting for deer in the county. And so, for as long as I've lived here, each year, dogs from the hunt clubs come running through the property, chase our livestock, and each year it escalates. Last year, they chased my dogs into the street, and they speed down the road, almost hit the dog, called it into the sheriff's department. I end up getting messages from the members about they have contacts in the sheriff's department, letting them know when residents call in. I take that as intimidation. Last month, their dogs were unchained and uncollared, killed our poultry. So each year it escalates. And as the county grows and bridges are finished, we grow with smart sense solutions, I wanted to just bring to the board to come up with some smart sense solutions for this issue for those of us in the Shiloh District. I know other states that allow dog hunting with deer, such as Georgia and Florida, have policies such as so many contiguous acres, 250-plus permitting for the clubs, permitting for the dogs, just some common sense solutions on this issue. So as we grow as a county, it doesn't escalate to a point, you know, potential confrontation as new people move in. I know we have to deal with it every year, and it'll probably come around again this year. So I just thank you for y'all's time and consideration of that policy. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else for a public comment? Mr. Fairfax.
I'm Todd Fairfax. I live at 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'd like to pose some questions for your consideration related to data centers. Do we want data centers audible from any street use adjacent or building? What noise regulations do we have in place right now for data centers regarding sound volume levels and sound frequency? What will be the combined noise level if we have multiple data centers near one another? How will we regulate the combined noise levels that exceed the level set forth? How will we enforce the noise limitations and handle violations? How close to neighboring houses and properties will we allow data centers? Remember the noise issue. Remember that these homes and residential properties are generational. Those people didn't move into known industrial areas. What would you want in your backyard? What restrictions will be in place to limit the cutting down of trees? What about vegetative screening? To give you an idea of the specificity of other counties, Loudoun County's newest ordinance revision specifies the percentage of deciduous trees at not more than 30%, conifers at not more than 70%, and all trees have to be eight-foot tall at planting. What are the setbacks from adjacent properties that are residential and have been for generations? Data centers should not be visible or audible to adjacent residential properties who didn't ask for this. How close will we allow data centers to be built near schools, considering the noise question? As a whole, what are the setbacks from roads for data center campuses, not just for the power generators, water cooling systems, storage facilities, and other mechanical infrastructure as currently required in the supplementary regulations? We should have very large setbacks and buffers between an industrial zone and other zones to provide a substantial separation between them, like a minimum 200-foot of dense trees and shrubs as a buffer, and a minimum 300-foot setback for all equipment facilities and roads. This approach maintains the rural character of the county, consistent with the comp plan and the resident's strong desires. In order to meet the high demands that data centers have for water, will we bind ourselves to a total construction cost reimbursement, as in something instructed and given to the county, that then the county must have a certain number of data centers in operation to pay back through taxes? What is our data center per acreage ratio? For example, how many data centers are allowed on a 40-acre property? We need to set standards that limit the amount to something manageable for us. Please consider imposing a moratorium on accepting any applications for data centers as a primary use, ancillary use, or related use until better regulations are in place to protect the county and its residents. Other localities have done this. For example, Groton, Connecticut has a one-year moratorium. We would be wise to follow suit similarly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Welcome.
I'm Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I recently spoke to you regarding the need for more robust data center ordinances. At the end of July, beginning of August, we had two corporations approach the county whose eventual goal would be the rezoning of agricultural property to industrial, to erect data centers and the power generation to support them. I explained that Virginia counties, other states, and other countries who have data centers in operation now recognize that their current data center regulations are not sufficient and detailed enough to protect the interests of localities and the citizens therein. I have three requests. Number one, establish thorough regulations governing data centers, battery storage facilities, and power plants. I do plan to engage the Planning Commission, but would request that the Board charge the Planning Commission directly with this, even to the extent of revisiting portions of the newly revised code. Number two, change the ordinances to allow data centers by special use permit only, even in industrial. This is not a ban. This just gives the county more leverage. Once a parcel is zoned i, under our current codes, a data center is by right. We need to keep the county's negotiating power and the county's ability to be site-specific in its expectations. Additionally, this maintains the public's ability to truly weigh in on specific proposals, rather, not just rezoning requests, because once the property is rezoned, a data center is by right. Corporations need to be held to compassionate capitalism, where an industrial project is a genuine win-win situation. We don't want to face a situation that locks the county into something, nor do we want the county sued by a corporation. If a property is rezoned industrial and a corporation has fully disclosed its desire to build data centers, the corporation has also fully disclosed a need for enormous amounts of water. If King George were to say that said corporation could not dig a well or develop a water treatment facility after they've zoned the property industrial, then the county would be at fault. It is much better to allow data centers by special use permit and negotiate from a position of strength. Number three, place a moratorium on considering requests for zoning properties to i for data centers until number one and number two are done. Localities have done this. I know you're going to say, but we could lose out on a good deal. The situation we have is incredible. Acres of flat land next to a river with two water hookups, near high-voltage power lines, and a way to sell excess power. We've only just begun to see the offers. We owe this to the residents who live nearby. Abraham Lincoln once said, "If you give me six hours to cut a tree, I'll spend four sharpening my axe." We need to sharpen our axe.
Thank you. Anyone else for general public comment? All right, seeing none. Mr. Dines, anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any Board members have anything to be read in? Okay, well, then I will close public comment. Moving on to reports of members of the Board. Mrs. Binder.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Muth, I have had several emails from you and other residents of the Shiloh District. It seems to be the dog running during hunting season is quite prevalent in the Shiloh District, probably because the long acreage. And then as one question, I was looked at, maybe the consensus of the Board, just to look into a little more information about it from our county attorney. Thank you, I appreciate that. For both the Fairfaxs, you seem to be new regulars here at our Board meetings. I appreciate you coming and to give public comment. I wish more people would come and give public comment so we could hear from all the residents. Thank you very much. I attended the FAMPO meeting last night. Even though King George does not have a voting block in that organization, it's very interesting to go and hear what our planners, even at the federal and state level, are putting in place that possibly we will have to deal with. One thing I thought was interesting, but I still don't know if there's enough ridership for it and what the cost is, but it is, they're looking at ways to increase bus service, especially in the Fredericksburg area, to get cars off the road, and they want to create bus-only bike lanes. And so why I'm bringing this up is there seems to be a push from the federal level to try to prioritize high-density housing or housing that has transportation with it, meaning if you build a development, it has to be high-density, and you have to have a way to take cars off the road by, it has to have bus service or rail service. So right now, they're really focusing on the Fredericksburg Stafford Spotsylvania area, but I have a feeling that they'll be coming our way sooner rather than later once the bridge is put in and we get more requests for development by right or not. So I just wanted to make my colleagues aware and the citizens that you should read up on the high-density transportation that's coming from a push from the federal level. One other thing I'd like to bring out, I have an update. Ms. Parker from the King George Historical side, the interim president, she sent Ms. Cupka and I a letter concerning what they've done so far to get their museum back open. Right now, they are working through some issues with reinstating their 501(c)(3), and it is nothing to do, they have to get their paperwork in order. It was several, more than several years, it was about five years of paperwork, and with the IRS staffing at this moment, it's going to take a little bit longer to them to get all their paperwork in order, but they are on their way to having that done. They've transferred over accounts into the names of more than one person, so that should help shore up their process of financial recording. And with that being said, they would like to know, and they're working on it right now, and I think Ms. Lackey has been working on a memorandum of understanding possibly with the organization so that they could get their museum open sooner rather than later, with the caveat of the IRS part might take a little bit. But they are allowed to sell merchandise, they just can't give out a letter to the IRS for your tax purposes if you get a donation. They can take donations, but I think it's really important we get the museum up. I've heard from quite a few people that like to go and do research, and it is a hotbed of activity on Thursdays, especially with older folks that are looking for genealogy, or there's a couple of people that are writing a book. So I think it'd be really important for us to get it open and also have presentations and events like our Christmas tree lighting. So please read the letter at your convenience, but I think they'll be coming soon with some memorandum of understanding that we can then have a public hearing and have a vote on. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Binder. Mr. Granger.
Yes, sir, thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to all who came and spoke. Mr. Muth, I appreciate your comments in regards to your concerns with dog hunting, and I appreciate the recommendations that you provided. So thank you for providing that. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, again, thank you for coming out, speaking about data centers and your recommendations as well. I do appreciate that as well, so thank you. So on Wednesday, September 7th, I attended a communal meeting, had a couple of different briefs that came out of that. The community planning and liaison officer, who works with the, or kind of looks to partner with the county in regards to community development kind of activities, spoke to the impacts of encroachment and, you know, how it impacts the base and their ability to perform their mission, as well as the impacts to communities. I think we can probably all see the impacts to our community, in particular with traffic and, you know, in the mornings with school buses and trying to get into Potomac, as well as her fire and rescue department on that road. Definitely we have some impacts, and so trying to just make sure that, you know, any development that's going in, you're thinking about those kinds of situations, that, you know, we're being good partners with each other in order to address that. Brought up Oceana, I don't know if people have been down to Oceana, as a prime example of not the best way to handle it, or not to handle it at all, really, because it went on for years and years where it wasn't really addressed, and then kind of late to the game and trying to address it. Captain Copeland provided some information, might not be pertinent to everyone, but in regards to masking, I'm sure some people who may work on the base saw that one week there's masking, the next week there's no masking, the next week there is masking. So it all just comes down from above. He says it's regulated at a higher level in the Navy, and so the regulation or what they follow in is every one King George citizen who's hospitalized out of 10,000. So if you get over that threshold, one per 10,000 citizens in King George hospitalized, then the base goes back to a masking effect, which in King George, we have under 30,000 people. So that means if you have three people in King George hospitalized for COVID, the base isn't going to go into a masking state. So that's just the process that it is right now. So just for anyone who's interested in that. And again, one other thing that came out, it's more about Northern Virginia, but it, you know, could impact people here who might be traveling up that way, talking about trying to help relieve gridlock. And so they're looking at, the Northern Virginia Regional Commission provided a brief talking about trying to put a ferry in. I've talked about the different locations that those landing spots could go, Prince William area, Alexandria, National Harbor, things like that. So it's obviously a lot more northern, but Indian Head's not too far from there, so it'd have an impact to that because it's Doggeren and Indian Head. And it could have some impact to some citizens if you're heading up that way. So it was an interesting idea. I don't know how much of an impact it would have on gridlock, but, you know, obviously something needs to be done because it's a problem up that way. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mrs. Cupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. I want to point out to Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, next Tuesday, September 27th, I see your tracking, I mentioned it the last time you came out, but we have another zoning and subdivision ordinance overhaul work session for the Planning Commission. So I would encourage you again to attend that, and public comment is offered at the beginning of every meeting. I did note, I looked at the agenda, and while it's not cited specifically in the agenda for that meeting with regard to some of the issues you brought up, you did mention issues about buffers and setbacks, and one of the major topics of conversation Tuesday coming up is community design standards. So you might glean a little bit, at least from the conversation that night. So thank you again for coming out and providing your comment. Mr. Muth, I actually, several years ago, have participated in a dog drive in your district. We didn't have the problems about which you speak, but I suspect that some hunters are more responsible than others, and so I agree with Ms. Binder and the rest of the Board that if we could take a look and see if there's anything we could do possibly to tighten that up, that might be a good idea, especially considering that we do, our community is growing, and along with density comes more of these types of issues. So thank you very much for coming out this evening and bringing that to our attention. So on Friday, September 9th, I spoke to Mr. David Stork of Historyland Memorial Park as relocation of the Confederate Memorial was underway that evening. I thanked him again for his willingness to host the memorial on his property. He was very complimentary of the firm we retained for the removal, as well as all of the county staff he worked with on the project, in particular Ms. Hahn, our procurement office, and Ms. Pitts, just had a very positive experience with county staff in this very complicated and controversial project. But I think it's in a good place now. I think it's in a place where all who wish to honor and observe it can do so in the fashion in which they choose. On Wednesday, September 14th, I attended the Ralph Bunch Advisory Committee meeting. On Saturday, September 17th, I attended the Northern Neck Land Conservancy's Boots and Barbecue fundraiser at Waterloo Farm, right here in King George County, hosted by Stu and Mindy Ashton. I can provide you a link to their website. It is nnconserve.org, so that you can learn more about this nonprofit that works to create conservation easements to preserve land in the Northern Neck. Last night, Monday, September 19th, I attended the Department of Social Services Administrative Board meeting. We have finalized our first-ever annual report, and we'll be requesting time to present it to the governing body right here next month. And I want to congratulate all those county employees who earned promotions this month. I know we have at least one in Department of Finance that we just learned of yesterday. We also have, I believe, one in the Fire Department, and I want to welcome our new Director of Human Resources. I'm sure Mr. Miller will be talking about this in his administrator's report as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupka. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's good to see everyone here this evening. Sir, in regards to the trespassing and hunting, specifically in the Shiloh District, last year, we reviewed the ordinances on rifles, usage in King George, and that was passed. A lot of the issues really come down to disrespect of people's property, one, and two, the lack of enforcement. So the game warden, or whatever they're called now, has seven or eight counties that it is responsible for. The sheriff's office are exo facto game wardens, but that's not their primary responsibility. So a lot of times, if you call the game warden, it could be several days before they investigate the complaint, and the situation is usually over, and sometimes those things can be very escalated. So I hope that we can come up with some solutions, some ways to make it easier for property owners and the hunters. We don't, we want everyone to be able to do what they want to do and respect each other's property and so forth. Fairfaxs, good evening and thank you so much for coming. I'm listening with open ears every time you speak. I take notes, and then during the week, I research everything you said. So, but I appreciate you coming, being involved, giving us information. Sometimes it's things that we've thought of, sometimes it's things that we haven't thought of, but I would encourage all of our citizens to get as involved as you folks have on that land area that you speak of. I had the opportunity to go to many different events this week, and got an opportunity to speak with constituents, and that's really rubber meets the road, is when you get to talk to people one-on-one and understand what their needs are, what's going on in the county. A lot of times at the meetings, people come to the public forum and don't speak, and we have no idea what's on your mind. But Ralph Bunch is moving along nicely. Thank you, Ms. Cupka, Ms. Binder, Ms. Jordan. And there's a lot of things happening in King George, so stay tuned and stay involved. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thanks for everybody coming out. They pretty much hit on everything, sir, about the dog hunting. Every five or six years, state looks into it, and it usually gets beat down, so it's definitely an issue. I've had a lot of experience with that myself, and some good, some not so good. But we'll look into it, and again, I'm sure Ms. Lackey, she's a very good researcher, she can look into, you know, if there's anything that we can do. So I know it's right around the corner. Fairfaxs, thank you for coming out. You guys definitely bring up a lot of good points, you know, having to do with any development that we have coming into the county. We can look at those points that you brought up, and look at our neighbors, and look at their mistakes, and look at the things they did well. And like you said, it's, we have the time to sit back and make sure that we do it correctly. It's easier to do it now than try to fix it later. And I also need to reappoint Mr. Joe Decord to the Planning Commission. He expired this last August. Second. We have a motion properly seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that's all I have. So we're moving on from reports of members of the Boards, and we are going to the consent agenda.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, moving on to county officials' report. First, we have Mr. Jones from the Treasurer's Office.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. One quick note about the Treasurer's Office. We're currently working on our billing file as we speak. Here's our hope to have it done by the end of the week, and to the printers by next week. So hopefully bills will start showing up somewhere around the first week of October, which gives our constituents ample enough time to meet the December 5th due date, so. Monthly Treasurer Report, receipts and expenditures for August 2022. We began the month with a balance due, or a balance of $44,179,529.83. The county received $15,596,128.41 in revenue. We dispersed $16,809,546.37, leaving us with an ending balance of $42,966,111.87. This has not been reconciled to the general ledger, and the month has not been closed, and that won't be done until after the county audit.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Jones? Thank you.
Mr. Miller, if you can make sure that gets into the meetings, the minutes, please? All right, next up, Sheriff Giles. I guess Mr. Dines, he's online?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, I have kind of three areas I'd like to report upon. First, to Mr. Muth, I'm not sure where he's getting his information in reference to having a contact in the sheriff's office, and these hunt clubs are being forewarned, but I'd like to rest assured that if I find out that somebody is doing that, they will not be employed with the sheriff's office anymore, whether it be animal control or any of my deputies. So I would encourage him to call me or call the office anytime those violations occur. As Mr. Collins is correct, the game warden does cover several counties, and their response would be delayed where my response would be immediate. So if he's still in the building there, please encourage him to call the office, and we would take care of that situation, you know, immediately. The second part of that is for the cigarette enforcement. Financially, obviously, I don't know financially where the commission of revenue is with that, but as far as the enforcement goes, we are scheduling another inspection here in the next couple of months, and for obvious reasons, I'm not going to tell you when we're doing that. So, but we are scheduling that in the next couple of months. And last but not least, it's my understanding that the county attorney, as well as the finance director, has reviewed and approved the Motorola contract for the public safety radio upgrade. So I'm asking tonight that a motion be made to direct staff to sign the contract tonight and move forward with this project. And that concludes my report. If I have any questions, anybody's got any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Sheriff Giles. Any questions for Sheriff Giles? No questions, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to sign the contract for the replacement radio system with Motorola.
Second.
All right, we have a motion.
Amendment of the amount?
Oh, yes. Give me a minute to get it. Get to get to the right page. I don't know, did I just off the top, I had the exact dollar? Where was it? Sheriff Giles, did you have the exact dollar figure? It was a long bit of information in the brief, and I'm trying to find that actual dollar figure.
11. I believe Jeremy's in the audience. Do you mind if he steps up?
11.8 million?
11.8 million.
Okay. I'd like to make amendment to my motion to sign the contract for the replacement radio system with Motorola in an amount of 11.8 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. It's a long time coming.
Thank you so much. I really do appreciate it, board. Thank you.
Mr. Miller? I would just add, as in the, not an addendum, but something associated with this, at the next board meeting, we will be bringing you proposals, bank proposals, for the financing of this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Jeremy. Chief Lynn, thanks for coming out and for all the hard work you all have been doing the last 10 years, I think. Okay, moving on from there. Up next, cigarette tax collection enforcement by the County Commissioner of Revenue. I don't see anybody there. Mr. Dines, anyone online from the Commissioner of Revenue's office?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Next up, report of the county attorney. Mrs. Lackey?
Sure, I have just a couple updates. The first being that the board had requested this scheduling, or opportunities for scheduling of a work session on the prorating of personal property tax, in particular of motor vehicles. Based on the availability of Commissioner Hart and Treasurer Jones, the date that is, has the most availability for all the proposed participants is Wednesday, October 5th at 6:00 PM.
Is that going to be here in the boardroom?
Yes, I believe so. I'll double-check with the county administrator's staff, but I believe that the 6:00 PM timeframe was available.
So, Mr. Chair?
Six o'clock. Mr. Dines?
The date is, the proposed date is October 5th, a Wednesday, which I do apologize to Mr. Collins. We attempted to avoid Wednesday, but that proved to be difficult in the timeframe we were looking at.
Mr. Collins, you had something?
Yes, I just strongly oppose the Wednesday dates. I've talked about it since I've been on this board for Jan, since January. I go to Bible study every Wednesday. I don't think it's fair, you may have to choose between Jesus and this board. And so, there's no other, there's no reason why you can't have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday. There's plenty, I saw on the doodle poll, there was plenty of availability then. Why are we always putting it on Wednesday?
Mr. Collins, as Mrs. Lackey said, and we got an email stating this as well, is that to arrange everybody, plus the Commissioner of Revenue, plus the Treasurer's Office, that was the only day available.
It just seems very ironic that it's always on Wednesdays, work sessions, Wednesdays, Wednesdays, Wednesdays. So, you can see, I'm very, very, very frustrated with this. I saw other dates that were available for everyone, and all of a sudden, it's on a Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins.
I think we can find another date, so you basically excluding me from this work session. That's, that's what, that's how I feel. I'm very, I'm very upset about this, you can see that. So, there's no reason why we can't make it another date. There's no reason why we can't make it another date.
Well, once again, like I said, Mr. Collins, we received email and a report from Mrs. Lackey, those are the, that was the only date available that we could all, including two other constitutional officers, that could get together for this important meeting.
So, can we get it transcribed?
Can you?
Can we have it transcribed? So I can see what happened at the meeting. Transcribed, not minutes.
Mr. Miller, is that something that we can do? Mr. Collins, can you not call into the meeting, or at least hear it?
I cannot call in when I'm in Bible study. Doesn't work that way.
I guess. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. You have to, you have to make a decision on that.
So, the board hadn't made a decision on that yet, but if they do, I do request it be transcribed.
Board's feeling on the meeting date and time? Mr. Bender?
I just want to put it out there, I understand, but we all make sacrifices. I mean, my daughter played a basketball game tonight, and I'm here at this board meeting.
Mrs. Kupka?
I can make it that night. I appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Collins. I think that we probably have the capability to get it transcribed. I know other meetings in the past have been transcribed. Staff is present with a recorder, and it gets sent off to a service, and then a printout is made, a transcription. So, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I would also like to note, however, that some of the dates suggested, and I'm not saying staff did anything wrong by this, but some of the dates and times suggested were Saturdays, and unless it's a special event, like Fall Festival, or like we have Economic Development and Tourism staff who agree to do events, and Parks and Recreation staff to do events, I don't feel it right to ask staff to come in on a Saturday for a meeting like this. So, I would prefer to have things during the week when staff is already here, and as close to the end of the staff's normal workday as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
So, since January, this is, this is a newly scheduled event. I have, I've put out there since the beginning of January what dates I'm not available during the year. And so, with that in mind, the date was scheduled for Wednesday. So, can you give me a reasonable explanation why you would have an event come up and then schedule it for when someone has an engagement already? It's, you know, it's like a board meeting. We know we had to be here on Tuesdays, so I make, make sure I'm here. So, this is not, you know, that, my event was scheduled before this event.
So, Mr. Collins, you're saying that we need to cater to your Wednesdays for eight or more people and staff to schedule meetings?
If you want to put it that way, I don't care how you put it. The bottom line is, is that all through the year, there's things that go on. We know when the Fall Festival is, we know when our meetings are, we know when my Bible study is, we know when other people have things, and we move the schedule around to fit those. So, why, 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 why are we, I don't, I don't get it.
Once again, Mr. Collins, like Mrs. Bender said, we all have to give up certain things to be on this board and to serve the public, and those are just unfortunate circumstances that you have to give up things, like the rest of us, for a meeting, to get the whole group, plus two constitutional officers, in a meeting. We try to work around your Wednesdays, but...
Not going to give up Jesus.
Okay. Well, we will see, we will, we will hold our meeting and try to get it transcribed for you, and try to do better in the future. So...
It's not like you're doing better in the future, because it's already occurred over and over again, and I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I? I'm looking at the doodle poll results, and out of the days given, Wednesday, October 5th, Thursday, October 6th, Friday, October 7th, Wednesday, October 12th, and Friday, October 14th, were what they were narrowed down to eventually. And the highest number of responses was for Wednesday, October 5th.
Okay, okay. Our meeting will be October 5th at 6:00 PM, probably here in the boardroom if we have it.
Mr. Chair, may I clarify the purpose of the meeting? Because what was just stated was only with regard to proration of personal property tax, specifically vehicles. So, when we talked about this in several board reports, I brought things forward. That was one of them. Another one, there was consensus of the board to direct staff to examine a local ordinance that would allow us to possibly provide a refund to taxpayers in the event of a surplus after the fiscal year-end audit, if we chose to do so. It doesn't, it wouldn't require us to, but we wanted to consider it. And I think there was something else that Ms. Bender was looking at, too. So, I just want to make sure, if we're having this meeting, that everything that we talked about with regard to taxation gets addressed in this meeting, so we don't have to go through another painful scheduling process, quite frankly. Let's get it all done at once when we have everybody there.
Mr. Chair, my portion was looking at the valuation and using a different method to value the cars, not the highest end value, but the median value. That was mine. And then, please send us out, so we can put it on our calendar. That's very appreciative, but...
That's right, because it was, the way the state code is written, it could be done one of two ways and...
Correct.
Consider doing it the other way.
Because we could do it the middle value.
Mr. Chair, make a motion? Sure. Make a motion to have that meeting transcribed?
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded, all in favor?
Will we have someone available to do that? Just want to make sure staff has that bandwidth to get that done.
So, the normal process is, is obviously, we do the minutes, and, but I'm hearing another request that, that it's transcribed, so I would have to look into what other services, if there is a, as Ms. Kupka indicates, that we'll do the recording of the minute of the meeting, and then we can have it professionally transcribed. I don't know how quickly that will be done, but we will, we will do what you're asking us to do.
Okay.
Is that an extra cost?
Yeah, there'll be some of that.
Mr. Dines, you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have done that in the past for the transcription of the meetings. There's a separate company that they use, there's a software, you upload the MP4 file, and then they transcribe the whole thing. So, we, it's a, I can't remember the exact cost, but it's, it's worth having for the absence of Mr. Collins.
The other question I would have is, are you, once it's available, do you want us to distribute it, or do you have to approve it at a regular meeting? To me, it would be something that would just be distributed, but I want to just have that clear. It's not like your normal minutes, which require you coming before the meeting, or before a regular meeting and having that.
I know in the past, it's just been distributed.
Okay, that's all I just wanted.
My pastime on the board.
Yes, it's a public record, so, right, that's why it can't be distributed. One more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Collins?
Motion that there will be no votes on that.
We're in the middle of the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
Make a motion that there'll be no votes taken on that, at that meeting?
It's my understanding, and I'll wait, there's a, needs to be a second.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the work sessions, we customarily do not take, take votes. The notice is just for the purpose of fact-finding and information for...
It is customary, but it has happened. That's why I want to put it on the table.
Can I ask to clarify?
Sure.
It's like, is I correct on these, they would have to be in a public hearing if we made changes, so we can't vote on it, correct?
Right, the ordinance would be subject to a public hearing, so the intent of having the work session in October is so that we could potentially consider the ordinance in November. There'd be the 30-day period prior to enactment for January 1st, so that's kind of how we backed into those dates.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I would also just add that, you know, the intent was to have a work session so that you could consider this, like Ms. Lackey said, and then you also wanted to include the Treasurer, and you wanted to include the Commissioner of Revenue, so that they would have input, because they're the people that are going to be administering all this. And I think that was the intent, and that was why it was set up as a work session. Obviously, if it was not a work session, or if that was not a need, Ms. Lackey would have developed the ordinance, and it would have come back, and you guys would have set a public hearing and gone through with the process like that. So, that, that was why we had the setup as a work session.
All right, I think Mr. Collins made a motion. Could you state your motion again, Mr. Collins?
There'll be no votes on the October 5th meeting?
So, we have a motion on the table? With no seconds, so that dies. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, Mrs. Lackey, anything else?
Yes, so, there was, there, there was at one point discussion that we might have the transient occupancy tax amendment on this agenda due to advertising requirements that will be proposed for the next agenda, the first in October. And the board in, in the middle August meeting, I believe it was August 16th, directed me to begin working on an arrangement, a legal agreement with the Visualize and Rise Foundation for the Ralph, the Ralph Bunch High School. And as I understand it, there's efforts underway to potentially begin some fundraising sooner rather than later. So, I've circulated to the board a draft letter of intent, which could be included on the October 4th agenda that would set down some initial mutual goals between the Visualize and Rise Foundation and the county, potentially also the Alumni Association, and so that there would be a framework to move forward with those negotiations and give the authorization for the initial fundraising efforts.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Thank you, Mrs. Lackey. Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Kupka.
So, would there be consensus of the board, then, to direct staff to have that presented at the October 4th meeting, then?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it.
And that's all I have. I'd be happy to, to give an overview of the public hearing item.
Okay, any, any questions for Mrs. Lackey on what she had? All right, Mrs. Lackey?
So, the next agenda item is a public hearing on an ordinance to designate the Ralph Bunch High School revitalization zone. This would be a tool in the tool belt, so to speak. It's something that would not necessarily come to pass, but in the event that there was private development of the, there's only two lots that are proposed to be part of the zone. One is the lot that is encumbered by the high school, the other is the adjoining county-owned property, which is currently vacant and undeveloped. So, a qualifying project, which is defined in the ordinance, it would have to be of a certain value, it'd also have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, could potentially be partially exempt for real estate taxes, reflecting the difference between fair market value of the property prior to redevelopment or revitalization, and immediately prior there, too. That could be for up to a five-year period. So, there would be a tax rebate, so to speak, which is authorized by the Virginia Code. And then, as an additional option, but not a requirement, additional economic incentives could be negotiated, subject to approval of a performance agreement approved by both the Board of Supervisors and the Economic Development Authority. So, once again, this is an optional authority that the board could choose to designate this zone, and then you would have further approvals necessary to designate any qualifying projects.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Lackey on that? Nope. Okay, well, we were moving to our public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding an ordinance designating the Ralph Bunch High School revitalization zone. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker, in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If you do come up for public comment, please state your name and address before you comment. If you do come up for public comment, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during So who's?
Yeah, so I guess I jumped the gum on the staff report. My staff report would be consistent with what I reported in my county attorney's report, that this is an optional authority. It would apply only to county-owned properties, so the board would have complete approval authority over any qualifying projects.
Okay, again, any questions for Mrs. Lackey on, on that? Okay, well, we will close up the staff report, and then open the floor for public comment. Would anybody like to come up and give public comment? I figured we have one.
A wounded warrior. Good evening, everyone. Claudette Jordan, President of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association. I'm encouraging you to adopt the ordinance, because I think it's a great thing, it's another opportunity, another tool in our belt, so to speak, that we can use to upgrade, revitalize, and do all the things that we need to do regarding that property. And it won't happen willy-nilly, it's already been decided that it has to be approved, and we have such great momentum going, that I think Mr. Miller and the staff have done a great job with trying to find all possibilities to get this project up and running. And it's an incentive to attract others to join up, and so the burden isn't just on the county, we have a collective effort to finish this project, so please adopt the ordinance.
Ms. Jordan, if you could, we all know who you are, but you didn't state your
11773 Big Bear Lane, Maryland.
Gotcha.
King George native who lives in Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, sorry about that.
All right, anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, has anybody received any written statements for this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close that off. And do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 14 Taxation of the King George County Code by adopting provisions to designate an abandoned school revitalization zone to incentivize private entities to revitalize property at or in the vicinity of the Ralph Bunch High School as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chair, can I just say something briefly?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank and recognize Mr. Nick Miner, our Director of Economic Development and Tourism, who, when we talked about this, took this and ran with it. So thanks very much, in addition to the county attorney, for all your work on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Miner, and you can step right up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Cupka. I think Ms. Lackey deserves a lot more recognition than I do, but I appreciate it, thank you. Does that work, Chris? Oh, hooking now? I just honestly, well, as long as the laser works, it should be good. Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to present on the proposed second King George Business or Industrial Park, and to provide an update. So right here is the proposed location. We are looking at a 49-acre parcel that King George County owns. This is also known as the Bus Garage Property. It's also a location where we proposed a second firehouse, or a third firehouse, for the King George County Fire and Rescue. The other adjacent properties that we're considering is a 28-acre parcel just south of that property, and then I believe a 107-acre parcel just south of the 28 acres that abuts the county-owned land. You can go to the next slide. So just to give a recap, the county-owned property is currently Zoned C2, and just providing a breakdown of what the permitted uses are currently there. We would be looking to rezone and then proffer out some of the heavier industrial uses that we currently have on our zoning ordinance. Go to the next slide. So at the last presentation, what I provided was a department's estimated tier assignment based on the VDP, tier scheduling, I guess you, scheduling system, I guess is what you call it. So we're approximately at a Tier 1 to Tier 2 for this property. It has the utilities, it doesn't have water and sewer, but this site was chosen, well, for one reason, because of where it's located, but two, because it's less than a mile from public water and sewer, and bringing that line down for a potential project wouldn't be too difficult. You can go to the next slide. For the current status, and where we are now, and what we've asked for, is a conceptual layout, some due diligence consulting, and some environmental consulting as well. So environmental consulting, specifically on stormwater management and where that would be laid out at. The cost to have that study done was $16,000, $16,500. And the other thing we're looking at here is also what we're looking at for, to getting additional funds to do a lot of the site work, that can be provided, that we can go after to get this site project, what they call project-ready, or, or site-ready. So we can either go through the Virginia Business Ready Site Program, which is a state program, or the Go Virginia Funding, which is DHCD, it's also a state program, but it's regionally run. Go to the next slide, Chris. So what we looked at, so this is just future uses, you can go to the next slide, Chris. We already looked at, so what we're going to look at here is the park layout. This is concept one. I know it's difficult to see, which is why I provided the board with handouts, but what I wanted to point out, or really what the differences are between, and I will go to the next layout after this, but the differences to this are just the entrances. So this one would come in right where the existing commercial entrance is, come down here and have a cul-de-sac, and breaks off into, I believe that's a 10-acre parcel. Let me pull up my slides, if I can see it myself.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion that might make the presentation a little more viewer-friendly? Could, Mr. Nut, because I'm looking at it, at the parcels in GIS, in County GIS Live on my laptop, could maybe Mr. Dines pull up the county website, instead of using your screenshots? Go live into GIS and pull up the same area?
We can, ma'am. However, what we're trying to, what I'm trying to show the board is
Trying to block off the red borders to show us where. I get that.
Yeah, I'm trying to show you the parcel breakdown, so you can see what we're looking at, but all in all, Chris, you can go to the next slide. The differences to these parcels is really just the entrance, and how they're laid out, and then the buildable acres that they could actually pull out from the park. You can go to the next slide, Chris. So in total, it doesn't matter the concept, they all break down to about five total parcels, and the most important thing that we're looking at here is approximately 70 buildable acres from the assemblage that we've collected so far. So some of the key points, the exhibits are different in their approaches to the road configurations and engagement of the properties of the roads. They both leave substantial space for buffering and flexibility in stormwater management, which is one thing that we stressed. You know, we set up these business parks or these industrial parks. I know that the county cares about rural character, so what we try to do is provide, or what we ask for is them to provide a nice buffer between the road and the development of the land. So it's, and comments from the engineers was, it's tough to say which is better, but they both have benefits. So this is just step one to the conceptual, or what we're thinking of as considering the next business park, right? This is just a layout. What's recommended is really going to be based upon how we subdivide, or who's interested in going there. So if there's a business that wants a 10-acre parcel, or a 20-acre parcel, or a 5-acre parcel, you know, we have concepts that we can show, based off the engineering reports that we have. Once we understand, or once we have an understanding that we want to pursue this as a business park on industrial park, the next steps are really just to get the property under control, or to have a public option, so then we could go after state money to do other site development. Or if there's an interested business that could go into some of those more ready-made parcels, they could come in and invest that money. But in the meantime, before we go after any public dollars, we need a public option in order to, to do a lot of the site development work that's required. So the concepts are just concepts, nothing in stone, nothing has already, you know, nothing has been done, it's just things to consider as far as how you want to build out the property. So until we go to subdivide and rezone, the concepts are just concepts. And Chris, can you go to the next slide? I don't think I have any, yeah, it's just questions and feedback. And ma'am, if you would like to bring up the live GIS, we can, if you have additional questions, but again, these are just conceptual layouts, nothing's in stone.
I would like to just add that, so the approach that we're pursuing is that it is a county park, and that we are going to control the process throughout. So the next steps that we do is we begin working with community development, you know, and, and then we start the process, like what Nick was saying, and it's kind of, some of this is parallel in the sense that we can pursue some industrial access grants, but we don't want to be in a situation where we, you know, if we get somebody in there that is interested, we don't want to necessarily just turn it over to them to then begin the process of filling in these things. I think that the process needs to work where it's a county-issued, or a county-controlled process, where there's, you know, we might at some point, you know, get to a point where you have covenants, that kind of stuff, in terms of guiding the types of development, and, you know, what, what it looks like, and how it, how it works. But I, I think that's the difference between the last one that was done, where there was a particular business that was very interested in it, and it was almost like the cart was before the horse. So I think we want to get the cart and the horse back together the way they're supposed to be on this.
All right.
Mr. Chair? I have several questions, so definitely, since this is in Charlotte, one of the things I want to make sure is that we carve out for the fire station. That has to be utmost important, that we have to have that space mapped out
Correct.
And locked in. The other one is, since I'm a very visual person, can you, can you just help me visualize, and, and those watching online, where this is? So we have the bus garage property, and where they used to store the cars, correct?
Correct.
Which would be where the fire station would go, and then the land goes behind it, correct?
Chris, you want to go more south, towards Belgro, and 3 and 301?
I'm trying to visualize where the other parcels that you, that might be part of it, is where I'm trying to put it.
Correct.
Like, how close does it go to the sheets? How far does it go down the other way? Where, where is it?
Right. Chris, you're still in Dalberg. Go towards Caroline County. You might want to zoom out. Zoom out some more. Yeah, yeah, go south, and then head west.
Yep, it's your place.
Need to get your compass, Mr. Dines?
Head more.
Taking a tour of King George.
Yeah, go more west.
He's not used to going out there, he's in Pennsylvania.
All right, so you're, see where Office Hall is? Go back, so go back to where you are, see where Office Hall is, and zoom in on Office Hall. All right, now just go, go south just a little, just a tad. Go, keep going, keep going, so that's CVS.
Yeah, that's CVS.
Right.
And then Walker Sand and Gravels on the other side right there, correct?
So keep going. All right, keep going. You'll know when you see it. All right, there you are, keep going. So zoom out just a tad, Chris? Okay. Zoom out some more? Right there, all right. So this is the 49-acre parcel that the county owns. The parcels that are under consideration is this 28-acre parcel here, and then this, I believe this is about 106, 107 acres here. So the way that they've designed it is that you come in through this commercial entrance, and you can either go straight to a cul-de-sac parcel, or you can break off, and you can develop this portion of it, and it keeps going, and then you develop this portion of it. So the water, or the RPA, runs on it, like, runs on the back of the property, in almost a curve like this, leaving this piece, and then everything in between here, and then keeping a buffer between this home and the road here. That's what you're looking at. And so the concepts are just the entrances, and how you can lay the parcel out. So they're broken up into 20s, 10s, and in some cases, I believe, 5s. So as we go forward, it would be my recommendation that, one, the county would either do some sort of option on this property, whether it's through the EDA or through the county, and then we can work towards either rezoning the county-owned property that we have, and then marketing the concepts that we have off of that prop, concepts that we have off of this business park, that's been drawn up by the engineers. Unless the county buys, or buys these properties outright, we can't ask the landowners to rezone unless they want to rezone on their own dime, or unless the county wants to incentivize that rezoning in some way for those landowners, so.
Mr. Martin, number 33, is that a house there, on that portion?
Yeah.
Or says 33?
Yeah, this is a rented home by the owner of the property, the 28-acre parcel, yeah.
No, the other, if you zoom out, the big one, there's like, it looks like there's a driveway.
Roll up.
Yeah, structure, right there, that, is there a structure right there?
Yeah, there is a structure on there, that I don't think, nobody lives in that home. Not, nobody lives on this property, only this is the residential property here, and then there's, I think there's a vacant up here, or two vacates up here, and then there might be someone that lives in another home.
And now, two other questions, and one, one is VDOT, have they been approached at all? Because if, there's going to be a lot of truck traffic that it might take.
So that's later in the process.
Right.
Yeah, so we would, so we would ask for a traffic analysis in that site work, so that would be required.
And then my last is to make sure that we would do cultural or historical, like a Phase 1A study.
Right, so those are all requirements of site work before you can develop on anything. So either we do it ahead of time, or whoever the developing party is, whether it's a developer or it's a business, they would need, that would be a requirement for all these properties.
Well, and thank you for visualizing it for me, thank you.
I should have did this printout instead of the one that they gave me, but I
Because I was having a hard time reading this one.
It is difficult to read.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Miner, what, what zoning uses would we talk about?
So what we discussed, what me and Heather discussed, the Community Development Director discussed, was zoning it to industrial, so we're at the highest use, but again, proffering out extremely heavy uses that we might not want in this potential, in this potential business park. You know, for instance, I don't think we would necessarily want, you know, a landfill here, or a salvage yard, or a junkyard, but I would say, based on the projects that I've seen, or that I'm getting interested in, in this potential park, I mean, we're talking advanced manufacturers, advanced manufacturers, research and development companies, I've gotten so many RFPs, and I have nowhere to put them, because they're only in industrial use, for the specific things that we're, that we're able to compete on. Defense manufacturers, definitely, that's a huge one. I believe Bowhead reached out to me recently, they wanted to expand. Total Machine, I think, wants to expand in the county. So we want a park that we can put them in, where, you know, they're with light industries, and I think this is something that we would do here, really focus on a hybrid of light industrial and industrial, to make sure that we don't eliminate future industry or future uses. And that's something that I'll work with Heather and county attorney to get done, if we decide to move that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Miner? I think you had answered. My, my only question was, have, have you had much interest in it? And I see
I have a lot of interest.
I see a couple of folks here that have some interest in it, so.
Have a lot of interest, yeah.
All right, good. Okay. If nothing else, I guess we have you up here for a couple of different things. Thank you for that.
Thank you. One more presentation for the board this evening. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to provide a quick update on my green chip visit. Green chip, you can go to the next slide, Chris. Green chip is a project that the EDA facilitated. Green chip purchased three parcels in the industrial park, Lot 10, which is at the top of the industrial park, and then 7 and 8, which is towards the middle, next to CMC and CRS Transport, and across the street from Fattis Concrete. So their existing operations, there's one operation in Brooklyn, and then their existing operation here in the region is in Fredericksburg. It's at 10 Harkness Boulevard, in the industrial park in Fredericksburg. It's about a 59,000-square-foot building, and essentially what they do in this do in this operation is all electronic shredding and precious metal sorting. So the top left is just a picture of the building. The top right is the machinery or some of the machinery that they use to shred T V servers, electronics that they are contracted out for. The bottom left is new equipment that they bought for that facility. And then the bottom right is literally what their storage area looks like. It's even, it's full, it's even more full now because businesses picked up. You can go to the next slide. So this is the expansion project that King George is looking at right now. So again, I already mentioned Lot seven, Lot 10, seven and eight, and the approximate investment for that, for that initial project was anywhere between 10 to 9 million and 30 jobs. And then what I went to Brooklyn to see in their existing operation there was to look at Alco Recycling, where they intend, or which they would like to do, is to do scrap metal recycling, and they call Field Material Transfer Station or Recycled Concrete. So the estimated jobs and investment for that project is anywhere between 30 to 20 million, five to three million just in equipment, and 15 to 10 jobs with a rail spur expansion to Lot seven and eight. You can go to the next slide, Chris. So this is just to sort of point out what we're looking at. So Green Chip took down Lot 10 here at the top, seven and eight. And then what they currently have options is Lot 73A. They have 18 and 17. So these lots here as well as Lot four and five is a part of the solar lease. If that solar lease is broken, which is breaks, which should be sometime in 2023, I believe, these lots fall straight to Green Chip for purchase. They have first right of refusal essentially. So that rail spur extension that we're currently discussing now would fall somewhere in this area here. And based on how they lay that property out and what they can do on that property will determine the total amount of investment and what they intend to do in the future. You can go to the next slide, Chris. So this is their existing operation or what they would like to bring to the industrial park in King George. So this is here, this is their concrete crusher here. These are, this is the material that comes out of it. And then in Brooklyn, what they do is they barge it out, out of a canal that they have there on industrial park. So they run this probably $70 million operation on about a three to four acre parcel. So the property that they're purchasing King George, they can do a lot more business in our county, given the tax rates and the friendliness that Virginia and King George offers to businesses. So what we're exploring now is, one, what that, you can go to the next slide, Chris. So next up, so what we're exploring now is what that larger expansion looks like for a C S X rail line. We're also looking at the state rail industrial access program. That's a $450,000 grant that requires a 30% match by the end user or the locality can take on some of that match if they like. And we're just trying to figure out what that total project and the scope of that total project is for their investment and their potential expansion to the county. Oh, you go to the next slide, Chris. So any questions about that project or that visit?
Any questions for Mr. Minor?
Sure.
Ms. Collins?
So that concrete company that exists there now, would they use that recycled concrete?
Yeah. So I've already introduced them to Fattis, and that's sort of where I think the wheels started turning for their current operation in Brooklyn. They're very complimentary to the industrial park, given that the landfill is across the street and what they currently do there now. So.
So their expansion, what hours of operation?
So, I mean, I think it's just like any other, they don't run during nighttime. It's all daytime, eight to five, eight to six. I don't think they would run that heavy equipment at nighttime.
How about noise?
Right. Yeah, that's something that we definitely consider. And I told them that this is probably something we need to bring to the board to see if they had any questions, how, what their feelings will be on it. And also to have a look at the ordinance and see what things we may limit that operation and take all those things under consideration before they made this massive investment into Lot seven and eight.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? And I'm not sure you'll be able to answer. You might. So when we were at the last G W R C meeting, there was to be a freight summit next week, and we had heard that that might be questionable. Is that going to go through next week or has it been postponed?
So what Ian Olus has requested from me, and that's the FAMPO Administrator, for those who know, is requested to see if I could find transportation companies in the county that would be interested in going. So C R S is on my list to contact as well as Northern Neck Transportation. So those are our two largest, you know, distributional logistics companies in the county that I think may have some interest. So I need to reach out to them. It's supposed to happen, but as long as each locality can bring somebody in that industry that would have a stake in it. The odd thing is that there's not, you know, not a lot of traffic in King George like there is in Fredericksburg. I don't know what the transportation routes are for Northern Neck and C R S, but I'm sure that it affects them if they're taking 95. So there may be some interest there for us.
Thank you. And may I actually ask Ms. Bender, because she was just at the FAMPO meeting last night, did they say anything about the freight summit last night?
I was going to chime in. Yes, they did. They're, they're reducing the freight summit because they've had trouble getting people to actually come in person. And that is because with everything that's going on, they're very busy and they physically can't come to a location to have a whole day of, what, five hours or more to do a freight summit. So they're trying to work on some Zoom options or actually going out to the businesses and knocking on their door to get their feedback. But they, they are having a little bit of a trouble actually getting them to come due to just the nature of the business and the 24 hour, you know, transportation. But they're, they're actually physically going and knocking on doors of freight companies that to try to get feedback.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Minor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next presentation, Mr. Clark, Safe Routes to Schools Grant Presentation.
That's not me. There we go. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight I bring you a brief presentation on the Virginia Department of Transportation's Safe Routes to Schools Program and the county's application for a walkabout mini grant for King George Middle School. In recent years, King George County has taken a number of steps towards multimodal transportation. In 2018, the Berkeley Group authored the King George County Trailways Feasibility Study. And in 2021, King George participated in the Georgia Washington Regional Commission's Greenways Feasibility Study and Plan. Both of these propose a number of improvements. The 2022 Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment scored biking and walking trails as a high priority for the community. From these three reports, the county has included trailways improvements for the next three fiscal years, not this one, in the capital improvement plan and is working with G W R C as part of the Rural Transportation Work Program to define and rank these proposed improvements. The V dot Safe Routes to Schools Program is designed to encourage and enable students to walk and bike to school safely. This includes planning and implementing projects to improve these conditions. The Walk About Mini Grant provides an onsite assessment of conditions surrounding school transportation, including infrastructure and operation improvements. The Board of Supervisors directed staff to pursue a walkabout mini grant in partnership with King George County Schools specifically for King George Middle School. The Director of Parks and Recreation has met with school staff and a grant application was submitted on September 9th, which included letters of support from both King George Middle School and King George Parks and Recreation. The deadline for applications is the end of this month, and we should hear back from V dot in October with anticipation of an assessment for early November if we are selected. A sample report, there are all, there's lots of them on V dot's website, but the one for Pulaski Middle School that was done two years ago is 32 pages long. So it's not a small report if we're selected and it comes with lots of options. Our committee includes interim superintendent Dr. Jesse Boyd, principal Dr. Casey Nice, school resource officer, senior deputy Rod Schreiber, G W R C and FAMPO Transportation Planner, Ms. Carrie Barber, P T A Representative, Ms. Ashley Cox, student representative, Ms. Peyton Carey, and myself. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clark? All right. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to action items. 0917, Mrs. Hahn, Department of Finance amended appropriate F Y 2022, 2023 C I P budget for final payment to Motorola for replacement of the existing microwave system and alarm controls.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. During the C I P process of fiscal year 2017, 2018, the King George County Board of Supervisors approved the replacement microwave system and alarm and control system for the public safety communication system for a total amount of 811,431 with an initial payment of 155,005 annual payments of 143,249.60. Contract number G S A number 0919, 2017 dash 001 was awarded to Motorola Solutions in October, on October 20th, 2017. The fifth and final payment was inadvertently omitted when the C I P funding solution was presented at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. Therefore, staff recommends that the 143,250 be transferred from the remaining balance for the gas line project to the replacement microwave system and alarm and control system for the public safety communication systems project.
Any questions for Ms. Hahn? Nope. All right, do we have a motion?
I moved authorize the county administrator to amend the F Y 2022, 2023 C I P budget in the amount of 143,250 for the final payment to the Motorola as summarized.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, seeing, or any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. Moving right along. 918, Department of Finance authorized transfer in the convenience center F Y 21, 22 budget from general fund balance to cover the deficit in the budget line.
The appropriated budget was 301,623 for the convenience centers in our fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. The actual expenditures resulting from the transfer of maintenance costs from waste management to the convenience centers, as has previously been summarized by the landfill director, totaled 408,458.11, resulting in a difference of 106,835.11. Some of those extra costs was the brush grinding, tire removal and shredding, refrigerant removal and compactor maintenance. So I asked that you authorize the county administrator to transfer funds from the general fund balance to the convenience center budget in the amount of 106,836 for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Collins?
So the 106 deficit, so make sure I got the history correct. Waste Management ran the convenience centers, and then the county decided to take them over. And we're spending money hand over fist where Waste Management was supposed to be running these facilities as a part of the original agreement with the landfill. And now we're 106 over budget for that particular 21, 22?
That's correct.
What happens if it, if it is a no vote?
The money's already been expended. So to cover the deficit, to make our budgets equalized at the end of the fiscal year prior to our audit.
Why would they spend money they don't have?
There were, of course, this is more for the landfill director, but there are items that the brush, for instance, if you don't grind the brush, the brush overflows, you, there's no place else to put it. The storm that we had in January of this year caused a great quantity of brush to get piled up there. We are, you know, we take our brush from our citizens when they're cleaning up their properties, as well as the tires. We take the refrigerators and things. And before they can be transferred from the convenience center over to the landfill, they have to have the refrigerant removed from them because it is a environmental hazard. These are items that had to be done. And the, I can't speak for the board who was here back at the time that the 17th Amendment, I believe is the correct one, was executed. The 17th Amendment did state that the county would be responsible for these items.
So I guess my question boils down to why would you spend money that they don't have? They never came to the board asking for the money. I don't, I think that's not a very good way to run a budget or I think it's, you know, get you out of, get you out of this bind without coming first and saying, these are the expenditures where, that we foresee.
Generally, at the end of the year, we use surpluses in other budgets to clean up budgets that go over. But this one, we, it has been brought to the board's attention numerous times that we were going to have to do this at year end.
I remember the tree situation, but there was no dollar figure assigned to it. I just don't think this is a good way to do business. You know, spend money and then figure out how to pay for it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, do you have any information that might answer Mr. Collins's question better?
Perhaps. So my understanding of the history is, is that the county had received a number of complaints about the condition of the convenience centers, trash and that had blown or whatever. And so we were obviously either asking Waste Management to take care of that, or we were sending our own crews down there. And I believe the previous board and a previous county administration had suggested that one way to remediate that was to have the county take over the operation. So there was obviously an agreement that the board approved, the previous board approved, that the county would absorb these costs. I don't know at the time if the full amount of the cost was, was provided and that the board exercised, you know, an action that was based on the full value, on the full amount of the cost. But this is something that we, obviously, we have an obligation under, as Ms. Hahn said, the 17th Amendment, we have to do it. And so these costs hit this budget. We have obviously addressed that in the current, current budget so that there wouldn't be this kind of an operational overrun, if you will. But it was something that the county agreed to do. And there, you know, was an agreement that was approved by the board. And I don't, wasn't here, obviously, and I can't speak to the history of it, but I, I'm sure that the board members that were on the board at the time can. Mr. Granger, I think is.
Sure. So I was on the board at the time, yes. Mr. Miller summed it up fairly decently there. So there's a certain number of dollar figure that comes from the landfill, from Waste Management as well. And it was due to the fact that the running of the operations was not, it was having a lot of challenges. And Waste Management, we didn't feel like was addressing it properly. So we did make a new agreement in order to have them provide the funding and we would run the operation. Unfortunately, the, the contract had us responsible for some of those points that Ms. Hahn just brought up. And the reason that it's this year that we're seeing and not previous years is because Waste Management didn't realize it, realize it. Our, at the time, county attorney didn't realize that it was written in that way. It got overlooked by everyone. And so for four years, Waste Management continued to do those operations under the impression that it was their responsibility to do those operations. And then I'm not sure what brought it up to be addressed this year. I'm sorry, say it again?
There was an OSHA complaint earlier this year.
Okay.
And, or earlier in last fiscal year with some things that needed to be taken care of. And when we requested Waste Management to do so, their attorneys looked back at the 17th Amendment and said, this is your responsibility.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if it gives the board any comfort, I am in negotiations right now with a Waste Management attorney for a cost escalator on an annual basis that I don't think is going to completely offset, given the drafting challenges with the existing provisions. But it would be a help in, in future fiscal years.
Mr. Chair, as the other board member that was around at that time, I did receive, and that was in my first. and that was in my first year of being on the board, a lot of complaints, especially at the convenience center that was in Shiloh, and so the residents wanted a proper operation, and that's what happened.
All right, thank you for all that information. So we have a motion on the table that was properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. All right, 919, Department of Finance, ARPA request from the Rappahannock Area Office on Youth.
Yes, the Rappahannock Area Office on Youth operates the Chaplain Youth Center, which is a 12-bed, community-based residential facility that serves both male and female youth ages 12 to 17. The center needs repairs and upgrades. In your board packet, I included a letter from the director at the Office on Youth that spells out what all of those different repairs are, and the total budget, our total bill for all the repairs is $28,500 based on usage. They estimated a 6% request to King George County in the amount of $1,710, and they're requesting that we transfer ARPA funds from our ARPA projects line, and we already have a, we donated some ARPA money last year to help purchase a van and other, I forget what the other item was. At this time, I'm requesting that you authorize the county administrators to transfer $1,710 from the ARPA projects expenditure line to the expenditure line for the Office on Youth for repairs to the Chaplain Youth Center.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded, any discussion?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer that I wasn't sure what this was or where it was, the Chaplain Youth Center, so I went on Google Maps and I paid them an unannounced visit this morning to check out the conditions there, and in the course of being there, I did meet the executive director here who submitted the request to us. While he couldn't take me inside the facility because there are youth there and I didn't have an appointment, we did walk around the outside of the facility, and I did note way overgrown vegetation that I could see where there would be an infestation problem. I think it's, I asked him, okay, so if we provide funding for this, do you have a maintenance plan to keep up with this? Because you can't keep coming back and asking for more money. That's a lot of bang, bang for the buck there, what they're asking for, but he said yes, that he had been there for about a year, and unfortunately, it just has gotten to the point where it's so overgrown that he doesn't feel it's safe or fair to ask his staff to help remediate it right now, but he thinks that if he could get a professional in there to take care of it, he could get it back to the point where it would be more manageable for his staff to take care of the ongoing maintenance of it. And I will also note with regard to the lighting, I checked out the lights that they had there, and they're at least 30 years old. They only had two lights in the parking lot, and they're the kind that literally shine straight down. They don't project out in the parking lot, and I could see where it would be a safety issue because the boundary line of the property in the back is at the railroad tracks, and the security fence, I mean, it's just a fence, it's not even a security fence. So anybody could hop off a train and hop over the fence and, you know, wander upon an employee walking out to their vehicle at night. So just from the limited experience I had as a police officer in SEPTED, Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, I think at least at a minimum, the exterior things I saw gave me pause, and I have no reason to think he'd be making up anything on the inside with the dishwasher and so forth coming tonight, and he said he couldn't because he had a presentation to another board, so he may be asking our regional other localities for their funding as well. I will say, I also asked him a question because in his request, it said Phase 1. Yeah, at the bottom, it says grand total for Phase 1, so I said, what does that mean? Are you going to ask for more money? And he indicated that yes, at some point, he may come back with a request with regard to the HVAC system. And I suggested to him that perhaps if that was a need, he might want to do it while localities still had ARPA money, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility with one-time expenditures. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me.
Thank you. So we have a motion properly seconded on the table, and discussion, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. All right, that's the end of action items, discussion items, I don't see any, and 2021, county administrators' report, Mr. Miller.
Couple things. One, first of all, just as, again, I wanted to introduce you to Mr. Derek Messler, who is our new Director of HR, the Human Resources, this is his second day. If he comes tomorrow, then we're good. No, I'm kidding you. I think he's definitely very ready to take on the role. He has a background in HR from the hospital administration standpoint, he's also been involved in benefit administration, kind of bring a lot of good ideas to us on how we deal with things, but he, I'm sure has a list of to-dos that he's going to get from the department heads and from myself and the constitutional officers, so welcome, Derek. Employee anniversaries, oh, let me do to-do lists. So you have at your desk just a number of, just the to-do list again. The yellow obviously means it's complete, complete to some degree, finalized, we can take it, we can remove them if you want, or we can continue to show them, but these do indicate that, you know, those things are complete. I am going to be adding a couple of things to this as well. Obviously, update the abandoned school revitalization zone ordinance, so that'll take effect in 30 days from today. Then the, we call it under Number 24 Investor Relations Agreement with Visualize and Rise Foundation, so that'll be presented at the board meeting, but I think specifically that's going to be more directed at a funding, fundraising ability. Are we still doing the investor relations agreement, or is it more of just recognizing their role as a organization to go out and raise funding for the Ralph bunch? Is that what you're looking at on the floor?
Yeah, it's the text that Ms. Lackey shared with the board today. It basically states an intention to partner with them, but, I mean, it doesn't lock anything in.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would allow them, there is a clause, a section with regard to donations and things like that.
Okay, and I'll work with Ms. Lackey on that. The dog hunting, obviously, that's another item, but I'll leave that to the sheriff and to Ms. Lackey in terms of what they're going to do. Sounds like the sheriff may have some other information. Just, again, the process here, if you have some things that you need added, you know, it'd be good to have the board as a whole add them. That's why we do these, and then we'll provide updates. I think there are some updates to a couple of things on the wastewater side, or excuse me, the water side. The Water Works, the Service Authority's Water Works Business Plan, which was submitted by Bryce Young in August, was accepted by VDH on the 31st of August, so we're ready to go on that. Obviously, I also have the relocation of the Civil War Monument is now in yellow, and as it is, it is complete, and I think that, I will say also what Ms. Cupka indicated as well, great effort on the part of everybody involved. I know that the company did a good job of taking care of the monument. They kind of ran into a little hitch, I think, when they removed the brick facing. They found out that the base upon which the monument sat was not in any kind of shape to be moved. I think Ms. Bender saw that as well, and it was deteriorated very, you know, in poor condition, and so the monument sits probably another 12 to, I would imagine it's 12 to 15 inches maybe lower than what people are used to, but if you haven't had a chance to go visit the site, I think it stands out very well. We will work with Mr. Stork at Historyland in terms of perhaps maybe having some trees removed around it so that it can accommodate, you know, more people to come, but just a really great job. I do think that shout out, really shout out to the Sheriff's Department personnel, they had deputies here the entire time, from Friday morning to Sunday. They were involved in some capacity, monitoring the situation if there was any kind of concerns or for anybody that wanted to show up and, you know, protest or anything like that, but there was, everything came off with a hitch, and so I congratulate Sheriff Giles and his deputies. I know Captain Weston was principally in charge of that operation and did a great job, but all the county folks that were involved in it, and I agree that Ms. Hahn and Ms. Pitts, I think Ms. Pitts has gotten a trial by fire in terms of being the new procurement manager. She's gotten thrown into a lot of things that probably she didn't anticipate, but she was doing a great job of coordinating back and forth, so thank you. But that's it, I have. Is there anything you want to add to employees? There's the list. We've got some 35-year, Mr. Clark, you should have brought Mr. Smith here, but 35 years with the, we should probably definitely congratulate him. Then the rest of the years that they have, we have a 31-year employee.
We have one right in the audience, too.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Schreiber.
Oh, okay.
Officer Schre.
Congratulations, Senior Deputy Schreiber, thank you for your service.
And he's working at the school, so add another 10 years probably to that. Congratulations to all those folks. This is a list that's put together by the HR folks, and so I'm sure Mr. Metzler, he'll have some ideas on how we can honor these folks for their years of service. And these are the new hires, obviously, Mr. Metzler. We have Autumn Alfaro in the Parks and Recreation Marketing Association Associate, and then we have a number of other employees. Jessica Emery is now our accounting specialist. She is moving over from having done the schools payroll, and then we have Megan Pitts, who's now the finance procurement manager, and then we have, and I think you may have seen, we have another employee that we'll be announcing in October who's taken over as a procurement technician, and that's Lauren Hall. That's effective October 3rd, and then we obviously have a new, we have Ms. Ashton, who is a new deputy patrol officer for the Sheriff's Department, and of course, Mr. Passer, Passera, excuse me, I can't read, with fire and rescue, battalion chief, and Marcuse, is it Marcuse or Marcusa?
Marcus.
Okay, well, you know, Virginia spelling, patrol sergeant with the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Chair.
Collins?
Though in regards to the new list he was speaking of earlier, I would request consensus of the board to keep it on it for four months after completion so it can be at the public record so they can, didn't hear what I said?
I couldn't hear everything you said.
I mumble. So I would suggest a consensus of the board to keep the to-do list, the completed items four months past their date of completion, so it can be a public record so people can see it.
You say four months?
Four months.
May I make a suggestion? As a follow-up to that, the ones that are completed, could staff perhaps move all the yellow ones to the end of the list so that all the things that are done are at the bottom and we're not looking at those first? Since they're done, they can go to the bottom of the list. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one thing about the Sheriff's Office and the great job they did on that Saturday. I was actually out there taking pictures for the Historical Society. They were very professional, not a lot of people came around, but I really commend our Sheriff's Office and their staff that was out there and stratified. They were very respectful, and they did a good job. Thank you.
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Miller outside of those? Nope. Okay, well, do we have an all-important motion?
Move to adjourn until Tuesday, October 4th at 6:30 p.m. in the boardroom.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your adjourn.